Good evening, so the work session to order. And the first item of business is food service. Yeah, we. I know we've been discussing in board meetings about what the next step for food service in our district is. We are up for. Either option to bringing a food service in-house or going out for another RFP. Yes, I mean, has done a lot of research and has some documents to share with you. They kind of talked through. The process and then we'll kind of share our thoughts on what the next steps could be, so. That means yours.
Thank you, Brent. So anyway, so what I did, I run different scenarios to see if we needed to go for an RFP. Or if we could actually handle to have self operation food service for our district. So all I did, I started first with a, if you go to the. How can you be able to share it, Ken, in, or they can look at it on their workbook?
I'm bringing that.
Okay. Go to the last tab where it says meals revenue calculation. Pretty much what I did here, I just took the meals that were served during last year for lunch and breakfast and snacks. And the C A C F P program, which I hope that he sent you the, the meaning of all the abbreviations that we use for food service.
Yes.
So it's pretty much the after school program. That's how we feed the kids for migrant after school and everything else that happens, harvest to raiders, et cetera. So basically, last year, we were able to receive a good supplementation from the. The O D E from the state to get us up to ninety percent of the free. Rate, which is the maximum that you can get. But for this year, you know, Debbie worked really hard and we were able to get the number high enough where it was about the sixty two point five percent. Threshold, it was a sixty two point five four percent, so we were able to receive a hundred percent of reimbursement for free. The free rate, and we don't even need supplementation from the state of Oregon at this point. So my only question I have for the O D E, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't only for twenty four, twenty five. So they just confirmed this morning that it's actually for the four years. So this is good until June of twenty twenty eight. So based on that, you know, my initial numbers for self up, I actually had a negative in the fund balance. But with this, with a hundred percent reimbursement, it's not as bad, I mean, it's still bad, but not as bad. So anyway, that's pretty much what you're looking at, you know, it's just a lot of numbers, but that's what it means, you know, it's a hundred percent reimbursement at the free rate for four years. Now, if you go to the middle tab, the payroll estimate, Kenny. So what I did, I went ahead and ran the numbers for all the different kitchen managers and food service workers that we have currently in our district. This information, this detail, I gotta say, Amy, was very helpful. To make sure that I had the correct numbers of people in the hours of the work and everything at each one of the kitchens. So what I did, I put the, all the F T Es that are fairly working right on the kitchens into what we normally pay in a salary schedule, you know, like similar for food service workers to. We'll see, which is for custodians. And according to the years that they've been working with, so they, so I gave them a middle step range, just to see where we're at, if we do a self up. So in considering position days, you know, like if they're working during the summer or they don't. The taxes and benefits for our district and the insurance that we currently provide to our own employees. So based on that, I had like a good estimate of what it would cost us if we actually have these people in payroll. For the first spreadsheet will show you that the total district cost for twenty four, twenty five would have been a million two. If we're self up. And so they also provided me some costs for, if we were able to run an RFP, not for a price agreement, but just for a cost reimbursement. And what they said is that their cost for payroll is about six hundred and thirty nine thousand right now. So as you can see, the difference is six hundred and one thousand between what, so they so will pay and we will pay. Now, the only thing I gotta say is that. Somebody that if we were to have a self up, Amy will have to have also, or whomever it is, an operations manager. With the operations, and that's the only thing that I have added into the spreadsheet. It's a hundred and six thousand, so we can take that off the top or the difference, and it's five hundred thousand. So now, unfortunately, we received a new purse rates from the next by Amy. So that I had to run the numbers and I did a very modest two percent call that, to run the same numbers, move everybody up. To see how much it will be. And in fact, you know, I didn't even change the ranges for these people, so it's actually even more than what I have here. But with that extra nine percent, the payroll increases about ninety four thousand. And I actually forgot to step them, so it will be even more. Another issue that we have right now is unemployment, you know, as we discussed last week. It looks to be like regardless of whether, you know, these people will qualify no matter what, because they don't spend any time in the classroom. So just counting like, we have a normal summer school, not as, as big as we had this year. And we just have migrant entitled type of one month of summer school for four days a week. So I gave it a, an estimate on like about six weeks that they could collect unemployment, so like about seventy five thousand for now. So anyway, if you go to the first half, Ken. So basically, I had to recalculate my estimated beginning fund balance for next year. At the beginning, I had about three hundred, four hundred thousand, but because we are a hundred percent reimbursement for this year, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand. And then it's going to accumulate every year, so that's extra money we can come with, okay? So just putting all the different revenue sources minus the expenditures that we can expect. And I even put only a hundred thousand for large equipment that we will have to buy if we were to have self up. So that would give us an ending fund balance, just estimate of two hundred and twenty nine thousand. Now, if you look at it, the expenditures comparison with the revenues is about plus to four hundred thousand more. So that means that every year we will have a deficit, so at some point we'll have a, a negative end income balance if we were to do this more.
When you say ending fund balance, you're referring to the food service budget?
Just the food service operation, yeah. We are required to have a separate fund and manage it as a. A nonprofit. One for the state and for federal.
Sure.
So anyway, that's what I have for self up.
Can I, well, if, if we, if the district did self up, would we be charged? Because right now, we're not, it's no cost to, right? If we did a self operating model, would we charge? No.
It's still B C E P.
It would still, okay. It was still B C E P, so it's a hundred percent reimbursement.
Is in order to get a hundred percent reimbursement, do we have, that's, that's the balance, we have to not charge?
So this is the, the reimbursement rates with the state for the revenues. And the only way you could charge students is if they don't qualify.
Okay.
For free lunches, but because we were able to get the community and the penalty facility provision, that means that everybody, regardless of their income, they will spend it for, um, half a meal.
There is legislation on, that I'm not sure I'm for yet, but free lunches for every level. Yeah, I'm, I'm digging into the number because I, but I think it's gonna, it's going, they want, the goal is to have every school district have free lunches. But I'm not sure. They are putting a lot of money in it, and so some schools like Pinehurst who have eight students, does free lunch make sense when you don't have the place to have them? Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of things, like why is no one, I'm like, well, there's probably some reasons. So, but there is going to be legislation and it's probably going to go through, they have to put extra money aside. So I can't imagine them taking away the things their goal is to have a.
No, I just thought maybe if that, if that helps overall make up the deficit in better ways, or, okay.
Were required, are we not to provide lunches?
Yes.
Yeah, we are.
So it's the cost of doing business, so.
Well, yeah. That's right, yeah, but if we were ever in the negative, then we'll have to transfer money, so we cannot have a negative fund balance for food service. So every year we'll have to transfer money from the general fund to be able to have a difference, the deficit. So that's something to think about as well.
So bottom line, it's like four hundred thousand?
Yes, if you look at the expenditures, just because we honestly, I, I did, we pay more than, than a private company. We pay their employees and they don't have all the benefits, the pension benefits. So that's where the big difference is coming from, it's a big percentage. And now with the first increases, it's even higher now, so.
This summer, if we were to keep Sadekso employees, they wouldn't qualify for unemployment under the district, right? It would, it would be under Sadekso.
And they do have a contingency for unemployment because they do pay it every year. Yeah, because they do qualify.
Right.
So you have any more questions about?
What happens if there's someone like sick and gone, is, does that handle like through the same? Like substitute thing that we have now, edge staff or whatever it's called?
Uh, no, for Sodekso, they take care of their own personnel.
If we were supposed to do this on our own?
Yes, we'll have to have substitutes.
Because we don't have many people in each school, so if someone's gone, it's like you're this critical that we have someone there, right?
Yeah, so right now, Amy hovers for people if they're sick. You'll see her at the schools and she does whatever she needs to do to make sure that the operation is running.
And I think with our classified staff too, we're getting better with our edge staff comp, uh, who's taken over our substitutes. And looking at actually having them for custodian too, but they're, they're very rarely all filled during the day. I mean, there are just a, a few that are filled typically, so. So yeah, that would be.
They're short?
Yeah, sure, yeah. And, and prior to edge staff, we don't, we rarely filled any of our classifieds, so. I think if you share kind of what your estimates is, if we did do an RFP and that compared ending fund balance. And then what that means for, you know, equipment and how much balance you can carry forward, so you can share that a little bit.
Okay, so if you want to go to the next. Spreadsheet, Ken.
Is it?
Yeah.
It's the, yeah, it's the next spreadsheet.
The next one, it's a self up, so the one that says F S F C.
Please don't ask.
So if you can go to the last tab. So it's pretty much the same meal calculations that are used for the self up, with exceptions that are included. What a price increase from Sodekso will look like for next year. And at this point, we don't have any information of how much the C P I or the inflation is going to be at the end. So I, I use just even a fifteen percent increase, okay? So I'm going from a four fifty seven per meal to a five point two, five per meal type of contract. So I just ran all the meals of five twenty five per meal. And that's what I use for the model, so we'll skip the, the middle tab, we'll just go to the last one. So anyway, so it's just a comparison of what the costing will look, look like. The revenues are the same as for self up and the beginning fund balance, but then the expenditure side, then you can see the difference. So there's no unemployment cost, the salaries and benefits that I have, that is only for a small portion of Debbie that we currently charge to food service. And then we have the price per meal contract. There are small amount of supplies and smallwares, services and fees, and I even left the equipment purchase, you know. We continue buying more equipment to upgrade the, the kitchen. So even with that, you know, as you can see, the estimated end income balance with that price increase looks very similar. So five hundred and eighty two thousand compared to two hundred and twenty nine thousand, so.
When they added the like pizza oven or something over the highest one, I don't remember exactly what it was, was that a cost to us or Sadekso?
When they added, what, I'm sorry, the.
They added some of new ovens and some things over there, that was that Sadekso put that in there?
No, that, that belongs to us.
Okay.
John did, um, so and that comes out of the same fund, so we don't have to supplement from general funds, it comes out of the same fund. So as you can see, it's a lot better for the district, we don't have to worry about going into the negative, a negative fund balance. Because we do have some districts in our area that are already a hundred and fifty thousand in the hole. And they've been like that for a few years. So anyway, I just wanted to present both options to you. So just to discuss, you know, right now at this point, just talking to Brent about it, we would recommend to go for the full RFP. As it is, they have presented us with a cost reimbursement type of model from Sodekso. Where we could just reimburse for their fixed costs, their salaries, their. Software, services, et cetera, and we will pay separately for food, because we wanted to spend more money on local foods. Well, when I approached the O D E, that's not allowed. It was about fifteen years ago that they said a lot of, a lot of districts were on the negative because of that, you know, that you cannot control the food cost and inflation. So to protect the districts that are allowed anymore, they only allow you to have the fixed price per meal agreements. And the RFP process is all controlled by the O D E. So they have a template and we need to use the template, you know? So if you don't use a template for any, for any reason, you know, they penalize you and you don't receive reimbursements, et cetera. So they do control the whole process from the beginning to the end. So when we're ready to issue an RFP, I have to send it to the O D E for approval before it even, it's even published. And they do have in the template a whole calendar of what needs to happen and when, you know, we just choose the dates. And all he said, you know, I need to have the RFP for approval by February thirteenth, I believe. And the cycle ends on the RFP approval by me, once you choose the, the, the person that is going to win the RFP. I need to have it approved by May fifteenth or something like that, I can't remember exactly. So what I did, Brent asked me to look at the dates of a possible RFP, so we have an idea of when we need to be working on this. So if you want to go to the PDF, can you? So. Anyway, on the timeline.
You scroll down.
You scroll down, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so. As you can see, it's, it's even before, it's due to them, but I figure, you know, we just, we can start working on this earlier. And I have the template, I, I already started working on the RFP template and to send it to him for approval. Once it's approved, then it needs to be published by January twenty seventh. And then we need to have a pre proposal meeting, I believe should be mandatory, so we can tell them what our expectations are. Any if our, if we're gonna put more weights, for example, on local foods, local sources. And the quality of food, you know, who can also are able, we are able to put more weights on that when we're ready to review the RFPs. It doesn't have to be the lowest price, and that's something that just changed last year, so we are able to put more weights on quality of food. So that's something that we'll have to discuss and when we're ready to have that meeting. And then, so yeah, I definitely, I need John's. Support on this, because he's the one that really knows the facilities, so when we do the, the site visits, the proposal meeting and the site visits, you know, we need to go to all the schools so they can see the facilities. Last time we did this, I believe it was only Sodekso and Chartwell, Sasharath. And at the end, we only received an RFP from Sodekso. So we'll see what happens this time, but we need to be prepared for it. Other than that, you can see the, so the proposal for the RFP, the sealed proposals will be due on March third. And those dates can change, you know, I just figure, you know, once we receive them, I believe John usually just receives the, the bids, the sealed bids, and then you just open them up and go through them, right?
Uh, I, I received them, I verified that all of the pieces that were required to be turned in are there. And then that's when we set up our group that's gonna, that score them out, and I.
Speaking of committee.
So anyway, I just used the very next day, you know, whomever. Send the proposal by two P M on the third, you know, we just have the proposals and we can verify that we have everything. And if whomever is gonna participate, you know, it can be on March fourth. And from there on, you know, we can decide who, who's gonna win the RFP and et cetera. So all those different steps were actually already on the template that I have to send the O D E. So they're like, tell me, this is what you need to do, and just put your dates according to what works best for your district.
If you say you had to take the lowest.
No, you don't, I'm not, you know, I would use two. Yeah, so that's the good thing, you know, it's not like a construction RFP, you know, it, first off, has to be according to what the O D E has on their template. And we can put more weights on the quality of food. And resourcing.
Can you say what you said at the beginning of this, or you said something they couldn't? They had, O D E was saying what kind of food they could use.
Sadekso, I think, was looking at options where we would just pay their employees and then we would have more control over the food purchases, is that what you're talking about?
I don't know, the first part she was saying, and I didn't catch the context of it, so.
And O D E would, would let, we were actually excited about that potential, because we could locally source food more, but it's, it's just not allowed. And I think they were coming to actually the regional manner, I think, regional managers from California, and I think they have, those rules are in place in California. If you can't do that from O D E, and our O D E route is very district, like he looks out for districts. And that's why they were allowed to do. So, so help, help me with this, then. What gives us some autonomy over food quality then, if we're just beholden to a fixed price and we can't exceed it? Is it, is it we, we can invest in better food, it just has to be procured by the company themselves, is that the distinction?
Exactly, yeah, and in a portion of the RFP, you actually provide them with a percentage that you are requiring them to spend on local sources, local food.
Okay.
And I believe on the art, last RFP, we raised it to eight percent, but we could even have fifteen percent, twenty percent, whatever we need, but.
You're gonna pay for it.
We'll have to keep in mind, yes, that, that means that the pricing is going to go up.
Right.
Because it's more expensive.
Okay.
Because when Sodekso's buying power, you know, they, or they can procure a lot better contracts for food, but it depends on what we're directing them to do.
Okay.
So that's the only thing that, besides inflation, and we got a really good pricing before, we have to consider the, what we're asking them to do.
Now, where's Sadekso outsources food? Local?
So they have to have certain farms, they need to be approved actually by the state, I didn't know this, but. There are some local farmers that if they're not part of the, what has been approved by the state, they cannot be then buy from them.
They have to have, be approved by USDA guidelines as well, they have to follow those, so there's a lot of hoops that they have to go through in order to get that. So I. That question.
Yeah, so I know about like fry farms, for some reason, they still have some requirements to have them be included this year. But every year I see them, there's, I don't know what's going on, Naun, I think it's called. Yeah, that's another farmer that I remember. And I know that Robal Farm School works with a lot of the local farmers and so will be able to.
It would be great to grant this provision, maybe.
So I, I talked to Rebecca and said, because she's been really wanting for us to really explore self up. And so last week I met with her and just said, here's, here's kind of the nuts and bolts, we're gonna share this with our school board, but we're gonna do, recommend RFP. But we'd love for you to be a part of it and look at the RFP and be, you know, help with scoring and things of that nature. So they're, they're a great partner and we, they help, you know, us procure grants as well. And so just to increase our option to be able to, outside of really kind of Sadekso contract, but to locally source local food, so.
Yeah, and what it says about the committee that we need to form, you know, they want parents, members of the community, administration, board members, of course. The only exclusion that I saw is students, because of the complexity of the RFP, we cannot include them.
We can, we can survey our students though, right? We can, we can ask them about their opinion of what they're eating now and what's, what they would like to see, that's something, I know we've done that. And we, we even added a question on the family survey that Saka Lali Elementary did at the beginning of the year. We'll do another push at conferences this week about just nutrition services for this reason, so. And I will say with, with the management as means oversight and the management of this account. And John's expertise in kind of upgrading our kitchens, we've, we've had some serious upgrades in all of our kitchens. I mean, Orchard Hills, just, that was a bond project, so that doesn't really count. But just what has, what Phoenix Elementary and Town Elementary has transformed into without really, really not expanding space. This gives us the flexibility to do those upgrades and have a larger end income balance and to do some, have some potential to be able to do that.
What's gonna happen to the current employees that are working in our kitchens?
So. If, so the X O is the winner of the RFP, that will just continue, but if we have another company, then. There will just have to be. Whatever, so that's what we'll do, probably terminated or moved to another location.
Or they could, I would imagine, kind of other company would, would help, yeah.
Right.
So.
Yes.
And, and I don't know where that fits in the RFP on, you know, they're not our employees, but, you know, really to say, hey, we. I mean, they are family essentially, I mean, they've come and worked for us for, or worked in our schools for years, years, so. It's a good question. On the staffing modeling that you did, you just took existing Sadekso, the existing Sadekso staff model and plugged in what they would make if they worked for us, essentially.
Right, yeah, using our own salary schedules.
Yeah.
Benefits, we pay our employees right now according to their position, you know, so from the full worker, you know, like a. An estimate of how much they made per hour and how much they will make in our salary schedule.
Okay, okay. I did hear from another district that is with Chartwells, that they just went through this process and no one else, Sadekso didn't even bid. So it's very interesting to me that other companies won't come in, like there was three tables of different places at. The, all by, I felt was really happy on the case part, whoever put them all there together, like it was kind of awkward for them to sit next, next door to their competitor, right? But I felt like it was interesting to find out that from the other school district that no one else bid. Like, I wonder why, like, I'm wondering about this, if someone didn't follow the guideline or didn't do their homework. I can imagine some districts would never be like you and figure out that we're supposed to be doing this and just go out for bid or something, I don't know. But, and, you know, things.
I feel like this is, I mean, you guys have cards on your tables right now, I, I feel like we'll have at least two, possibly three, the others have reached out and.
Yeah.
And that's good for the district, I mean, the more competitive. And that's good for the district, I mean, the more competitive the more, um, and I think. You know, when we walk through facility, we're different facility than we were, you know, five years ago. So, um, it could be enticing to, you know, more companies.
So the model for them is scale. Trying to be as profitable as they can based on that maximum amount of dollars that they can charge essentially, that's, that's what it comes down to.
If we were to do this in house, which I know is not part of this conversation right now, looking at that, but. Would, based on the guidelines from O D E. Would the district have to provide the same um, components for the meal reimbursement? So, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, that, that comes from, from the federal government and those are the guidelines that we all have to follow, whether yourself up.
Whether, okay.
Or.
Because it's, because you hear about a lot of waste when you have to provide. A lot of different options with potential quality, could you, is there a conversation that you could have about offering maybe less? With more quality, still having options, but. Anyway, yeah.
Unfortunately, we can't, you know, we are given by ounce, how many ounces of meat, how many ounces of brain, you have to follow the guidelines unfortunately.
Though, all that modeling too on the, on the, you know, the, the dollars, the revenue. That's based on participation, right? That's not based on our student population, so there's probably a, a difference there. So if you can get greater participation, that's more revenue that we would generate, correct?
Exactly, and that's something that, like I said, you know, I used the, just the meals that we served last year, which it went up for the year before. Um, and it looks like in July, sorry, September and October, the meals, the participation went up about five percent. I, I understand they have time to modify this, but. Hopefully, you know, there's more participating in the benefits we have, that will, yes, it's all the revenues will increase as well.
Um, does, do we know percentage of students, is it, is it, is that easy enough to calculate it that way? And you don't have to get it, I just, is that a metric that we look at? Our participation rate is seventy-five percent, is that how we measure it?
Yes, um, and it goes by school.
By school, sure.
Last claim.
Okay.
You know, it depends on the school, the participation, so like, for example, for Phoenix High School. Now that we're able to serve uh, breakfast and even dinner and it's a longer period, you know, the participation has really kind of.
Okay, got you.
And we could even modify that, I know. I mean, So Dexo was even pushing it, and, and anytime our participation rate go up, we get revenue as well, um. You know, but there's, there's only so much space in that, so if we did two lunches, we could probably, you know, do some, but that's just some scheduling thing. So as we get up to eight hundred, nine hundred students, that's definitely something that, you know, we could look at as well, so.
What is the average amount of time that we give students to eat breakfast and lunch? Now, the elementary school is like fifteen minutes for breakfast. Doesn't seem like enough time.
Yeah, it, it does a little, I mean, depending on when, yeah, buses show up, I think the cafeteria, there's. There could be a little bit longer as far as, we did expand it to um, expand the time. Uh, at the high school, and I think that's why our participation went up, you just have more time and um. And the, I can't remember what the middle school time is for breakfast and.
I know there's, I know the middle school is also longer.
Yeah.
When the, they start a little bit earlier than the elementary school does.
Yeah.
So like, the gates of elementary school don't open until seven forty-five, and then they start class at eight.
Yeah. Even, even the um, lunches where I know we've expanded, but you know, we had to really work them through. Ten minutes, so sitting down lunch, we, we've tried to eliminate that a little bit and at the elementary level. Uh, we have more space at Orchard Hill, I mean, you know that whole lunchroom at Orchard Hill, it was. You couldn't fit anybody in there, so you, it was in and out, we started lunch at ten forty-five and didn't end serving until. One thirty, so.
Yeah, it was quite a thing, that was part of the bond, that was part of, that was part of selling the bond.
Uh, and another reason the high school went up is they heard, So Dexo heard us in the meeting. And they've opened a second location at the high school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, for breakfast, and I think, uh, and that's still on about, when you tell me, it was a hundred and thirty people on average a day. Um, that are going to that second location.
Where is that second?
It's where the student store is by the library.
Oh, I thought that was gonna be used for.
Oh, so you have.
For a little cafe eat type thing, because.
And we're expanding that as well, and I've, uh, we're gonna order some equipment so they could actually take. Uh, breakfast sandwiches up there and uh, in a warmer and uh, put them out, we're also planning on adding. Toasters, uh, because they wanna do bagels with like different toppings, so we're planning on adding toasters and a few other things, because eventually they'd like to do something. Upstairs with like a lunchtime also. Um, and like I said, that was based on all of our meetings with, with them, they're, they've heard us and they're trying.
Well, students, when we went to the, it's the daytime, I went out and talked to So Dexo and the students and asked them if they liked upstairs on it, it seemed like it was. It had only been going on for a week, but they had seemed to like it because it was less crowded and like.
Yeah, and I know that the equipment, you know, that's when you wanna have extra for equipment, because then. Of course, they want hot sandwiches and we were able to buy that for them and, and then spend it to lunch, so they can have hot lunches up there too, at some point.
That, that's six hundred thousand dollars, is that put in that funded each year? Or, or, or did we, did, did we put it in there a few years ago and just hope to retain it?
So honestly, Michael, since the pandemic.
Okay.
All the districts, not just us, we ended up with extra money in our ending fund balance, because. We were being reimbursed at a very high rate and not starting that much. So uh, we ended up with extra funds, not just us.
Okay.
And that, thanks to that, we were able to use almost five hundred thousand, like four hundred fifty thousand on the new equipment that was purchased for the new. Kitchen at the high school, so we were able to reimburse all the money to the bond.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
So that helped us tremendously.
Okay.
And right now, we're still. Recovering from the pandemic and our numbers are going up, but since we had such a good deal with So Dexo, the last RFP. Were able to, we're still continuing to have the high balance, but before the pandemic and everything, our balance will be. Up to three hundred thousand, you know, like on the two fifty, two three hundred in change, never this high.
Okay, so that's an accumulation.
It is.
Um, I have a couple of questions still, uh. Can we, one of my concerns, I went and looked at school lunches and it seemed like there was a lot of packaging, can we put something in the RFP? Because um, there was, some of it was like, when I went the day, it was like plastic. Packaging, and so someone spent time putting every individual piece, and I understand they have to wait. Into this pla- plastic packaging, and the kids took it out and then everything inside that was packaged, and then they threw it away, and I just thought. Ooh, how much money are, are we spending on packaging and it's just going. I mean, it's like in the morning and then we, it's by the end of the day, it's in the trash. So I'm wondering if we can put something in the RFP about packaging and I don't, I'm assuming packaging is included in the prices of food.
Does it cost?
And so I'm wondering if, if there was a way that we could ask to cut down on packages so we could.
Do you remember, it was at the elementary level?
Yes.
Okay, and.
I might even have a picture.
Yeah, I was going to say, it depends on, on the age of the children and then the.
It was elementary and it was like, I couldn't even believe it was lunch, by the way, it was like yogurt with crab crackers with. Something else and something else, and it was packaged in a clear, clear package. And then it was each individual, and I said to them, can, can we do it without the packaging, and they're like, well. We have to have all the components to, and I'm like, well, can't we like pre-make trays or is there something else we could do? Um, that wasn't just being spent and someone's spending all the, and I said, who's spending all the time doing this, and they said, we don't know. It comes this way, but somebody in So Dexo is spending time putting these in there, so time is also money, plus. The cost of e- extra stuff, plus, who, I mean, then you've got like garbage cans full of plastic, but then the cost of. There's a bunch of stuff in that, so I'm wondering if that's something we can have a discussion with our RFP.
Definitely, and you know, we can still have a discussion with So Dexo right now and see what changes we can make to this year.
Okay.
About packaging, and so that's why I was asking, you know, when, because I know that um. It's probably easy and easy because they only have so much time to serve their classroom, but sometimes they have to use that to be able to proportion the food according to the guidelines.
But they had, but they had like, for example, it was like a sandwich, chicken and sandwich, and they had that and they weren't, I mean. It was, they were scooping them up at the time, and then they could have had, and they had like the little paper back baskets they were using. They could have easily put the crackers, yogurts up in a paper basket or something, I mean, there was a lot of different options in this.
Classic.
Yeah, it was like this plastic clam shell, little, that is like what you'd find in a fancy food restaurant. And it was cute, but I was like, I just saw, like, I, I stood by the, because I've heard of waste and we talk about that on the federal level. And um, so I stood by the trash can and just saw like. And I was like, oh geez, and each of these are ten cents, that's a lot of money being thrown that could be used for something else, so.
Okay, guys, that's something we can talk to him about.
Yeah.
Environment.
Yeah, well, I'm teaching the kids about ways, I mean, there's a lot to it, but for me, I was like, we could have better food for one, and then we can have a lot of other things. Um, my.
Put any language you want in this.
Perfect, let's put some language in there, uh, it's not too much, uh, and then my second question is, as board members. Is there something that we could do to help people show up to the RFP? Is there something, because we do get approached by these companies at convention or via email, and I know some other school districts have gotten. Some um, different companies, is there some, is that something that we can do as school board members, reach out and say, we, hi, we would like to see you participate? Or is that something that we can't do?
Well, um. Honestly, we are to publish the RFP, you know, we usually use, it used to be open, organized. You may have other ideas, but they have, we have a certain handlers, and they all know, and they're already like contacting us because they wanna know when the RFP is.
Okay.
All three of them knew. Um, the only thing I'm gonna mention.
We're up for bid, yes, we are, yeah.
The only thing I have to remind them.
Because they might, okay, I mean.
Not on there.
No, because some of them, I've talked to them before and I think they need reminding, because like, oh. We didn't, we were late or something, and I was like, well, so, yes, they know, but they don't always get their stuff in or.
Well, they wouldn't be aware of this, they would have to watch.
Right, right.
Well, yes and no, because the. The O D E also sent me a listing of contacts for all the companies that show interest. Of participating in Oregon, okay? So some of them, I don't even know them, this, besides Chartwells and So Dexo, there's some other names. And what's gonna happen is once it's published, I'm gonna go and send them the information so they can also have the opportunity to bid.
Perfect, thank you.
So, eh, the only thing that I was going to say, you know, I can send the, the information and also if one of you. Also wants to send an email or information, I think that will be also appreciated.
Does anyone know if any other districts in our region are going out for. Um, are up for RFPs for their food service? And the rea- the reason I'm asking is because if there is another company that's. Not in our region, because they're kind of all looking at that too, and there's multiple school districts down here all going for RFPs. Would that attract another vendor that wouldn't normally come to a district our size, but if there were multiples in our region?
Um, I can probably find out, I mean, what I can tell you is that I know Metford is with So Dexo, and same with Eagle Point.
I think Eagle Point just changed or looking at changing, am I correct on that?
There's still with So Dexo.
Okay.
So So Dexo and Chartwells are the ones that are in the region, or people are doing self-op.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, the other one, that's why we can't remember their name probably, is because they're not, they don't have quite a presence.
I don't know the thoughts here, I'll tell you what it is.
Other than that, I know Free Rivers, uh, is with Chartwells.
Okay, I know someone changed and they were telling me how much better it was, but I thought it was Eagle Point.
Clamath City had Chartwells, and then they did the kind of hybrid consulting, went to kind of self-op-ish, and. I think there's some mixed reviews on them too.
And the county one is that self-op, right?
I'm not sure what Clamath County does.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that they have their own, because they have a whole warehouse, they're bringing all the stuff in and then they turn it out.
If we did self-op, I know that we're probably not, but if we did, I know we're a great district on dipping outside the box, is there special. Like partnerships or, or grants or scholarships or stuff that we could use to like fill in the gap so that we could do? Um. And I don't even know, it sounds like there's, it's real, I'm just touching on the O D E guidelines, like I said, I've been to hearings about new lunch things. And I know it's very regulated and the options aren't as flexible, but I was just wondering.
Just so you know, this RFP is a one-year RFP with four options, so.
Okay.
Then there could be, there could be options for that, I will tell you, I'm hearing some really um. Astronomical negative fund balances for food service, which is really. Kind of, yeah, and that's, that's who have been self-op already, and then we'll have a. Double-digit pers increase on top of that moving forward.
I'm curious how, um, kids on their food is amazing, every time they go, it's like, that's why I'm like, what do you have? I mean, the food looks really, really delicious, and I'm just curious what.
A little different setup with charters and.
Yeah.
Multi-million dollars worth of grants every year.
Okay. Which is impressive.
I know, I, I've.
You are, what?
They've done events there and, and have their kitchen do that, so maybe that's why I agree.
Well, thank you so much, that was very thorough and um, always appreciate the detail, which you evaluate things and. This is my eighth or ninth year in the school board and I learned something new today, so.
I know, I hope we can visit this again in a year or two, I'd like to maybe not just. Rubber stamp it for another year, can we?
Well, we, we are going out for RFP.
Right, but instead of, uh, you said it's one year with the off again.
Yeah, for the options, we'll have to see, I mean, it'll be next year at this time that we'll start looking at. Um, and doing that, and next board, I mean, I had Denise just do information and discussion just to kind of recap this and add the recommendation and to. To try to get committee members from this board to sit on that for March fourth or whatever that time was, so.
And I think we just got an email from Julie.
From Chartwell.
She's been emailing a lot. So uh, the only thing I just, close that I will share with you, it's that when I talked to Richard Williams of the O D E. He playing, uh, like, he just told me, he said, well, you know what? I've seen a lot of districts that are on the negative by now when they're self-op.
Yeah.
There's no protection, so the O D E would rather have us to the price of women because then they're more protected and we're not running on either of them. And we have that hanging over our heads, we can't, we, so we have. So, all the funding, it sounds like the funding money that O D E is giving for the free and reduced program is like the very minimum that you can run.
From what I'm hearing, I, I could be wrong, is like really small and minimum amount of money, that's another problem. Thing is, if you opt for that, you will sometimes opt for less quality food, and so I think that. The only way you could actually sometimes do it is if you have a bigger, doing self-serve doesn't work with the. Limitations that sometimes is given is what I've been hearing out of that's true, but.
Well, and they, we do get some commodity dollars. And it's up to the district and then, if we have a company, up to them to also choose what we need, but if we want. To have more fresh food, vegetables and local sourced products, we can with those dollars instead of pre, prepackaged.
Okay.
So it's a, a matter of, uh, through the RFP, making sure that that company knows what our preferences are. Even if the price per meal is going to be higher, if that's what we want, you know, that's what they're going to have to invest on, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Adrian. Uh, facilities, yeah, I think I want, John, why don't you. Uh, facilities, yeah, I think I want, John, why don't you just go um. Talk about the Bear Creek Greenway.
Okay.
And then you can talk about solar and then we'll finish with Culver.
Okay. Uh, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Bear Creek Outdoor Educational Space. Um, believe when your folks, um, I included these maps of the area.
Yeah.
Where the property is. Uh, yes, we partnered with our community forestry uh, to help. Bring in the partners, because there's lots of different organizations, I mean, there's the City of Talent, there's also the Bear Creek. Um, Wetland Protection, there, there's a lot of different organizations that have. Um, a, a little bit of a stake in there, um, so we've partnered with them to help pull everything together. And advise us on grants and things, um, I do know that they were reaching out uh, to, I think it was. He's got about sixty-nine, six, it's about sixty to seventy people that they've reached out to. Uh, for a meeting on January eleventh, and I believe uh, they are gonna be reaching out to you if they haven't already.
You did earlier this week, that was kind of like. My mom?
Yeah, it's, it's uh, it's scheduled for January eleventh and it's, it's really, um, for those of you that were part of the high school design. Experience, a collaborative approach, if, if you were a part of, if you weren't a part of that. Um, we took student input, we took staff input, we invited, we had community events where we invited community and get, and got. Uh, input from them and then we pulled all of that together to come up with our design. And, and move forward to the high school we have.
Well, I'm with this, I mean, we, we're not familiar, we're very.
Right. So uh, that meeting on the eleven will be in Talent Library, um, uh, did include in your report book, this is the invite for that. Um, if you look at this plan here, because we have met with the city and they are very excited about. Uh, partnering with us on this.
Which city?
Town.
Okay.
Um.
And I, and I just thought I would.
Yeah, if you. Our section of property is, is this little triangle here, and we uh. Met with the city and there's actually, because one of the problems is, is our, that lot is pretty much landlocked. Um, although the city has future plans for a park in that area that would actually tie to our. Piece of property. So, they actually found us an area that we can bring buses down, uh, originally this uh, this. Kind of projects spring up from uh, ODP wanting to do like an interpretive trail and stuff, and then. Uh, later when we were talking, said, what if we did an interpretive trail? And all five schools or all the schools were part of it, and maybe they could even adopt areas. To maintain and, and do plantings and things like that, so it'd be a good educational experience as well. Um, like you said, it's gonna be a collaborative design process. Um, the property access and utility discussions have, have already been going for about two months now. Um, just trying to find out which partners might be able to help us, um, and then also maybe explore grant opportunities to help get this done. Uh, the helicopter sliver. Yes, it's, it's.
This was, this was a different entrance eh, than I think was originally, was originally the end of this cul-de-sac?
Yeah, there's a.
What you're talking about, the city provided a different, okay.
The thing is, eh, especially to get all of the schools involved, uh, we needed a place where they could take school bus. They get more students there, right? And that little cul-de-sac wasn't gonna work, so that's when we started exploring. Uh, talking to the city to see if they would be interested in this, and they're actually very excited, they talked about potentially. Uh, bringing in, doing another uh, path. Um, off of, I don't know if the main road is, but where the freeway is, they're doing another path.
Suncrack?
Yeah, into that, uh, so that people could walk in and check out the, the interpretive trail or whatever and, and go out.
I think the original kinda visual and excitedness was about really having an outdoor learning space right at the Bear Creek, and we are. Schools, um, especially ODP, uh, but many uh, schools go down to the Bear Creek Greenway Restoration Project.
Been doing it for years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and really having a space of our own and being able to do a gazebo, learning space, and then when it started, we started to hear about potential partnerships. Uh, and the City of Talent being um, wanting to partner with, really kinda allowing us more access in there. Uh, it got really exciting, and then with this, this initial contract would just. Kind of that, uh, kinda what ZCS does for Culver Field, like all that co- cooperation. Um, and then what's really exciting is that these uh, this group is really connected with a um. A number of grant opportunities to where if this, you know, what the needs are, what the design is, what the cost is. We really feel like this could be funded in majority by grants.
And the educational opportunities are incredible, I would've talked about uh, potentially the construction class building. Like picnic tables, possibly gazebo, um, some of the, the things for that area. To help make it a successful educational space, um, talk, and then obviously there's uh, like a. Potential for an interpretive trail, um, potential for uh, grants to do like um. Native plantings and stuff, and, and do something, possibly something um, educational that way with. Like Lithia Park, where they've got the plants and the description of what it is and all of that stuff.
Is this kind of like their public works property, is that kind of?
Right now, yeah.
Now.
That turnaround, so if you go to their public works property and you, you take a left, there's a road that goes down beside it.
Mm-hmm.
There's a big field out there, that's clearly, this would be a great place for buses, and this is the path right down into your property.
So would it be open to public?
Yes.
Yes.
Or that's a thought.
Yeah.
So the outdoor structure there as well?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd have to look at how we, um, how, if we were to block it out, I mean, that's just, it would be open space, so.
My only concern would be like if a classroom was headed down there and there was.
Yeah, I think we'd do more things.
Something happening, be, if it was a public space and there were people down there and you're taking your classroom out.
Absolutely.
It might be a potential to treat it somewhat like Orchard Hill where during the school days it's closed. During the school time, but then after hours could be up in the public if that's what the board wanted to do.
Yeah, I have to.
Oh, um, how can we get partnered with the community group that came together?
Um, Mike, um, he, he uh, worked for Tree City USA, so like all the new trees. Uh, I think they've put in like a hundred trees at TMS, they're gonna do, oh, and TES. And they've actually approached us about doing more plantings, more trees at TES, um, and. Mike Wright has written grants for City of Talent, um, and he's worked with them for, for a few, several years now. Before that, he was the head of SOU's um, grounds department. And I actually met him, uh, we were in the same cohort at SOU, that's how, that's how I knew him, but I. Hadn't really talked to him much until Tree City started doing the, the projects out there. So he was, and he ha- has so much knowledge of all of the various organizations and the different uh, laws. Like around Bear Creek, what you can and can't do, he was just the natural person to go to.
And then, are they a nonprofit? Do we pay them?
We pay them, we, we entered a contract with them. Nine thousands on the nose, right?
There's just, it's in the, over. Under the estimate.
Any other questions on this? We're really at the initial stages and um. You know, really looking forward to what the, what the hopes of the community will be and, and creating space for our. You know, students to be able to access and.
So they kind of sort of ZCS for this prop, that's their function, is to be the consultant and help. Well, especially, oh, yeah, okay.
I call all of our architects and engineers and they're all partners to me.
Yeah, right, right, right.
My only concern is um. Vandalism, I don't know if any of you have ever done the greenway cleanup, but the things you find on the greenway cleanup is just. Like, what in that, sometimes it's what in the heck and um, how did this get here? And so that would be my only concern is that I wouldn't want students to get into having some. Items be left that could be dangerous to them.
Yeah.
And I would hate for the students, it's heartbreaking to have them show up and then everything's broken or vandalized or something, and so that would be. My concerns, um.
That's what I just wrote down.
These are some things that we talked about at the community meeting, I imagine, right, like?
For sure, and included in the design, uh, I mean, I. I totally understand the concern, because it was one of my concerns when we got the property given to us.
Yeah.
Um, but also, I mean. We could fence it off and just have it for schools eh, until the city actually does the park there. Because then they'll have a way to patrol it and, and, and stuff, right, so that uh, that might be. Something to consider in the design.
Well, then the city has more map, they, I, I'm assuming they have someone that goes through and like locks. Facilities at night, like bathrooms and stuff, versus we don't really have that in our budget, so it would make more sense if, if the city would help with that. And maybe they could, maybe they went mine because it's right by their facilities, maybe we could do something with that, I'm just. Frank, so I mean, I'll, I'll try to go to the meeting, I would please, if I was available, that's just.
No, I mean, I, I, what I mean is that's a valid concern that I think we're sure gonna wanna raise, you know, that, that. Should be discussed in the planning of all this, is how do you address these? How do you address those, those concerns, because they're, they're definitely valid.
So just to understand, we would be developing really only the Triangle piece property and the city would be developing the other walking. Trail.
Yeah, that's nothing to do with that, so they actually own the property that, that uh, backs up to the, the wider part.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, where, where you would enter this.
Mm-hmm.
They own, besides that public works, they own the property all the way to where the residences can surround it.
We wanna talk a little bit about solar and then we'll start getting into Culver.
Um, the TMS solar design is complete, um, we hope to uh. We need to uh, bring you the contract to, to look at at the next, maybe December twelve. Uh, so that we can get materials ordered, because the goal is to start installing. Um, as early as mid-January to February timeframe, the solar won't be operational until June. Uh, and that's because the battery will be available until then, so they would do all the panels and all the, all the uh. Infrastructure work that they need to do, and then when the battery came in, uh, they'd shut the school down for a day, the summer. Connect everything, and then we would be on battery power.
This is part of that grant, right?
It is, yes.
Super exciting.
And, you know, we got the one for Talent, we're still waiting for the state contract, that sometimes takes a couple months to make it our way. And then uh, the goal is, we've already, in facilities, we've already started compiling all the information they need, and. I've started identifying circuits that I want to work parts of the school, because the solar towers are gonna run everything, right? So I've been identifying the areas that I, that are important to me, like I did for TMS.
And then I'm assuming we're gonna have a manual or something, can I, as experience, um. We have some just, we have some batteries and we have a whole mini greenhouse to bring the fires. And trying to explain to them about what's like, you know, hot water at night when there's no solar helping. It drains the battery, right, so I'm assuming that there's going to be some instruction or training or something at that point. So that people are running and we are in eh, battery capacity, we're not like all of a sudden like, oh, I thought we had for forever, because. Some, I just from experience, some people don't grasp the concept and, and they. Yeah, I mean, yeah, and so how do we train and, and help and, and um, that kind of stuff? I personally didn't realize it as much either.
That will all be provided.
Okay.
And I'll be overseeing it, so.
Perfect, that's confidence. You know, really, I'm still right, it's batteries, just controlling how, how the power is getting to.
Not my first review.
The um, thank you, John, for that, I think just uh, first of all, receiving two huge grants and really. Uh, for Talent Middle School, obviously, and Talent Elementary, to have that option is. Uh, it's just incredible for a district like ours and, and definitely, um. You know, our obligation when, when, you know, something uh, tragedies happens, that we, our obligation is to help serve our community. And that's where we're standing.
Are we saving enough in electricity that we could?
Cool.
I love that that was where you went, but what I was really thinking was, um, food.
Oh, uh, okay, so Beans High School saves uh, approximately twenty thousand a year with their solar. They do not have battery backup there.
Mm-hmm.
And Town Middle School, we have approximately the same amount of solar as the high school.
Mm-hmm.
One advantage to having battery power is we can actually, it's, it's all in the software. Um, peak energy time, they, it can draw off the batteries, and then. Eh, so that will even offset more.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we'll have that uh, in basically the same, roughly the same size display at TES.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's got less power need, so we'll be able to power up more, and then um. I also, Brent and I talked about this, I plan to apply for Beans Elementary this year. And there were that the program may end, so I'm going to also apply for Beans High School. To add additional solar and battery power to what we have, for battery backup.
Who's the program through? Through the state or is it a federal program?
State. It's probably comes from federal funds, but.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because I, I think Rick was in the room, during convention, we were having a discussion about facilities rules and rural communities. And I think we're a great example of when a disaster happens in a rural community, the school is the biggest. Place to go, that there's not, you know, um, and so I think that that, that's why I'm asking, because. Um, that's gonna be a big discussion at this next legislative about how important um, having facilities. For the whole community and how important the school is the hub of that, and I have a feeling that we may be an example of that, and so. It, it's kinda sad that that is going away, because I think that's one advantage that rural schools would have over like a bigger. Um, urban area, because urban areas, they have like, you know, big facilities that people can go to, I mean, I know there's more people, but. Um, versus a rural school, there's a whole area, yeah, so.
Yeah, example of this summer in Eastern Oregon where some schools had to delay start because their fire. Uh, services were occupying their, their schools, so, um, yeah.
We have a Talent Middle School, uh, because of the gyms and the cafeteria, that whole corridor.
Right.
Is where people would come in, in the event of a disaster, that is where we focused all of our battery power.
Right.
In addition to the solar part of the project, um, as you know, running kitchen equipment, actually that does not. It really drains the system, right, so I'm also putting in a generator connection, not a generator, but if we had a, a. A disaster and it was during winter, or even if it's during the summer, and we need to have that kitchen up and running. We can rent or get one from Red Cross or get one from FEMA.
Okay.
And connect to the kitchen, and then we actually, I found out uh, that. Civic Power gives a ten thousand dollar, they'll give ten thousand dollar grants to schools or any. Civic Power gives a ten thousand dollar, they'll give ten thousand dollar grants to schools or any public entity each year. So you can apply each year and so my goal is to apply to do the exact same thing at all of our schools. Um I already did it at the high school when we did the construction, we put one in. It only does the gym uh cafeteria area and theater or gym and theater areas is what it that connection is for. But trying to add to it.
That's smart, thank you so much, because usually if it's a natural disaster, usually the sun isn't out. Um when that's going, I mean, whatever it is, the sun sometimes isn't out when the disaster is going, so.
Or the smoke is blocking it.
Smoke is blocking it or, you know, something.
Let's move to uh Culver and um you just wanna give the update on the. Envire, the D E Q voluntary cleanup um that he shared.
Yes. Um so we've applied to get a project manager um through D E Q uh because it's a volunteer program to do the cleanup. And um we're kind of in a it they're a little overran with projects like this. So trying to, we're waiting, we're trying to get them to um assign somebody to us so we can get moving on that process.
Hopefully, he uh Jonathan William just emailed up there this week again to say, hey, where is? Beans Town School District in DQ, because we thought it was gonna be more September, Octoberish, um so we're starting to. You know what, it's hard for the course right now for town, but. I will tell you when we were talking about this and getting ready for this meeting and kind of the plans and the tentative uh options that we have. I I don't know, I just got butterflies and just like this is a long way away, but it's starting to get going, so um. I will just share.
The next step is starting to get going.
Yeah, the next step is starting to get going, I don't know what what.
We've been progressing on this for.
Makes uh sense to.
So slow, I mean, that's good.
I don't know how to best get that in the camera.
You want me to click? What's there?
Oh, yeah, that's.
On that, it's gonna look at you, never mind.
Leave it still.
Um I'll I'll just, we'll just do this in.
Oh, okay.
Great.
So as you know, this is um essentially the master plan for uh this property. At this point, we are uh working on a a sales agreement and getting uh things ready for Boys and Girls. Uh we talked a little bit about that on what that looks like uh at our last board meeting. Um they are involved in a capital campaign and they're starting to go after uh what they need to be able to develop that. Um everything's in conjunction with uh these uh C S A and Z C S as far as. Uh looking at the partition with the city of talent, uh and so we we kind of have three or four. Cars going down the uh highway at the same time and and I'm hopeful in the next uh. A few months, we'll have some some things we can close to the city and um get moving on that. The other parts are little uh. Uh I'll I'll share that we are in uh con uh discussions and D C S have been great about really kind of looking at these turf fields. As a proposed phase one, because we need to take pressure off the investment we have at the uh football and soccer field and. Band practice and you name it turf at uh at the high school. Uh and if you go out there right now where the grass fields are, there are kids out there every day, hundreds and hundreds with. Uh playing soccer with the our local soccer programs. Uh and so it's getting, it's getting a tremendous amount of use. We um are assuming and we feel like it it is in the best interest to uh essentially. Do this part of the parking lot and um and roadway and obviously the entrance as well. Uh we're assuming the city will require us to do that to be able to put these turf fields in. Um so in in your package, you have uh examples of contracts of what Z C S would do as far as all of the design. Um and that's moving pretty quickly. Um I think if we can uh. Get some conversations and John kind of mentioned that the Z C S had already had a uh conversation with the city. And it was, it was a good, good discussion about the potential of what um. What we can do there and starting to get going. Now, pricing is one thing, what that will cost, because infrastructure and just the. Uh all, everything you need to put in two full side soccer fields is is quite the um. Quite the cost. Uh once it is all said and done on um. Our bills for our bonds and seismics and and supplementing some of those uh summer projects with Esser. We have a little over three million-ish still uh in. Our bond slash incentives and grants and things of that nature, so we have, we have some funding to to really get this started. Um the next, the next piece in 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 really, we've met all of our bond obligations and and spent our sixty eight million dollars plus the uh premium. Uh so we do have some flexibility, but we're still essentially trying to meet the bond language using upgrading athletic facilities. And so proposing a phase two uh of what it would look like to do this turf field as well. The X factor there will be what infrastructure we will need to put in um to be able to do that. We will. I I think we'll kind of basically say we already have a field space, it's just re- replacing what kind of surface it is. So hopefully, we can just keep uh not have to do all the infrastructure up there, but we'll have to see. Um the other pieces are just unknowns in the discussion uh for board at a later time. We still uh want to have um some uh uh somebody do a pro forma of what everything after Z C S does a whole full design on this. What it would cost to build it all out and then really kind of see where the phasing is. Once we do get some options uh here and this in place, I think we can really look at potentially looking at grants for an indoor. All purpose facility there uh and seeing what those costs are and maybe doing a campaign ourselves. Um to be able to do it indoor with with the smoke in the winter. Um I think we have um some people that may be able to step up and do that. These spaces are just kind of yet to be determined on what, you know, they're in place, they're in the master plan, we'll see what the little lake wants to. How they wanna proceed, how long they wanna go uh at their current space, if they wanna just see about working with the city to keep their current space. Which is, which is okay, um I I do think the idea of having, you know. Uh our little lakes with our high school programs is pretty enticing, that is uh just so much benefit to that, I believe. Uh and then O D P really kind of looking at that discussion on where that fits in with our, you know. Master plan with our district and the programming and things of that nature and obviously that's a funding concern as well. Um and and where that would come from. Um.
Are we, is the district currently charging groups to utilize the grass fields over there?
Yeah, we are, and we actually increased that this year. Um and we don't charge a lot because of uh the main uh use is our local soccer, which are essentially all of our kids. Um.
There's other groups out there too, adult groups, aren't there, that aren't necessarily feeder programs?
Uh there could be now, there there. Could be some people just using it without a facility use and thinks it's a park, so that would be a concern. Uh dog park maybe too.
Say yes. There are adult groups out there utilizing it pretty regularly.
Yeah, from my knowledge, I I didn't know of any.
No, when we've been out there late, there's.
There's like a couple rooms. And I probably drive by daily.
Yeah, there's, there's adult soccer groups that are over there.
Okay, then, yeah, that's something.
We have signs in place that say that it's.
Well, they have to jump the.
Yeah.
I mean, it's locked, they have to, they're, 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 yeah.
So, yes.
And they park like this.
Dangerous, yeah, same. Uh because there's no really parking there, I mean, it's.
No.
None of the.
Yeah. Um so to answer your question, yes, and we have a sliding B scale and depending on who the groups are. Um so I'm excited about where we are, I think there it's a long way to go and it, I think really it's gonna depend on what the. Uh funding mechanisms are, but we do uh with, you know, John and Yasmin and and your all support of really stretching our dollar. Um and utilizing Esser funds as well, we do have some funding to really get started on these projects. If we could get this done. By the fall of twenty twenty six, that would be an incredible feat, I think, to the district and it would. It'll just be a great space for our community as well and really start taking pressure off a space that's that's being, has a lifespan in itself. Um at the high school.
You had talked a little bit about reaching out to legislators about um getting some help with infrastructure because of the community. Impact of this space, what? Have you started formulating those arguments or conversations?
No, but there's also, and we all, we always get a email from America um. Um Silvert for Wyden uh that has uh up to two point five million dollars every two years, I think. For things like this uh that really talk about infrastructure, so there's a federal piece. And potentially a state piece that could help with that and once we actually have our vast numbers and we can start applying for those. Um and it it works well because you can't really, it can't go to uh projects that have already started, it has to be initial. Uh startup projects and so.
What's the standard with the this city talent?
Um I I think we're, well, we're in the, that's essentially done, we're there, now the next part is to partition off this for Boys and.
Um so for training and development, this is a continuation, if you remember, of a good. Question or concept that Dawn raised about having a policy around. You know, board trains and developing developments that we attend or participate in. Um and so I think what we have before us is this is a possible policy we can. Utilize this isn't, yeah, it's a, it's a sample policy. So we have not adopted this yet. But Denise included a sample policy that we can review and discuss. And then she also included. Um just a reminder of PhD or member compensation and expense reimbursement. So. Thoughts on policy? I guess we can start there.
I thought that it was the one kind of line that. In the bottom to control those the investment and time funds necessary to implement the, I think that kind of. Rounding that out or getting a little bit more specific maybe to this board. Um superintendent informing board members of upcoming conferences. I think we hear. Specifically the Dawn's connection, a lot of different opportunities and. Color different caucus representations we, we hear a lot. So as long as it didn't have to. Um recommended specifically by um the superintendent, which um just expanding that. And then how, how, how would this look like from a funding mechanism or um? A distribution if there's. You know, enough for board members to attend potentially two conferences a year. And you choose summer and maybe one is national is kind of a standard and then enough for. One other one with an option being regional or summer conference or a national um conference or something. So. Looking at what that looks like and how that impacts the budget. I mean, everything does.
Yeah, I, I think oftentimes you guys see the conferences, I mean Nancy, you email people, but I, I can't recommend those because they.
Right.
You're way down the line way, uh a lot of times. And so um just have a kind of a process and a procedure and yeah, the funding. Uh just so you know, we did increase the funding this year. And so we um really are big. Our, our big chunk is typically those um, well, the annual conference and that um summer conference that are, that are board attends. And those have both happened this year and I just got a budget. Update from Yasmin and you know, after all that, we increased it, I think ten thousand dollars. Up to thirty thousand dollars and there's still a balance of after accommodations too, because we have some accommodations in there. Uh a little over twelve thousand dollars remaining for the year.
But didn't, weren't we hiring OSBA to assist with either superintendent evaluation or board self evaluation as well?
Which might be those accommodations. So.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and we're gonna talk about that too, because.
And some, some of the, like with the leadership, like took years of oftentimes, a lot of years are paid for through OSBA and so.
There was a hiccup, but it finally, I think, is being paid through OSBA, yeah.
But other, I mean, national, the advocacy and things of that nature, so.
Yeah, PACE is being paid through OSBA and PACE. Um the conferences going to Washington DC is being paid by PACE. Possibly in our NSBA, um the Georgia Conference Atlanta is being through OSBA, so.
I really do feel like it should be intentional about NSBA. I mean, um there's. You know, I just, I just think like, for example, our, um if we have. Our middle school or just to say superintendent, like it's, it's nice to go every three or four years, um. You know, to connect and maybe we just say, hey, let's, let's choose um that's budgeted for two board members. You know, a year and kind of switch those off. I mean, that's something that we do. I know that's what SOU trustees do, so um kind of spread that out a little bit.
It's a good idea. You attended the COSA conference. Last year.
Your conference, yeah, yeah.
And so, and I think I saw something where um I need to follow up with OSBA that um one of the LHC responsibilities was to attend. The COSA conference, but I, that was a new.
Well, it was old, I think.
Okay, change. It's just in some language that I saw.
Not me, I were.
No, um so I didn't know if there were other um. Connections to those types of um conferences that you already attend where it would make sense for a board member to go. Or does it not make sense for a board member to go?
Yeah, in that case, um we had a pre-host of a session where we went over our um strategic plan. And so I helped present from the board members.
From a perspective.
Kind of like OSBA where you have.
So. But I do think there, there is value in, for example, this, that they're modifying the winter conference now to get back to OASBO, the finance. And it's, it's back to um mid-February, which makes sense to tag it on with legislative. Uh connections and things of that nature. So um. Uh I, I do think there's, there's, there's value in that if you don't. Um I think is OSBA partnering with COSA on law conferences?
Yeah, well, the law conference is sort of, it's PACE and.
Oh, PACE, yeah.
But PACE is.
Yeah, okay.
So yes and no.
And so some of those types of things too, it, it makes sense though.
Cause PACE houses most of the OSBA attorneys.
I, I think it does make sense to have a policy in kind of some direction, just so um. You know, we have some ways to um kind of have some checks and balances and. And obviously if things or other things are paid for, that's just bonus. Also, there's some grants and scholarships sometimes to these um to attend, which is great and. You know, you backfill it with the district, you know, pay just maybe transportation. I don't know. So.
Something I, a couple of things stand out to me that I think, I think this policy is good. I think it's specific yet. Um appropriately broad um to give the board some latitude. Um a couple of things that stand out to me are um. The line, well, the, you know, I think number one um in the second half. I think we could definitely work on some language there, you know, I, I think, I think, I mean, yeah, I mean, it, it, you can bring.
Yeah.
Ideas, but anybody can bring ideas. What I might suggest is that we discuss it at the summer retreat. At some organizational meeting, because we usually know what conferences are going to be coming up. Um just an idea. Um um and then. Number three, it says if authorized by the board to attend. So perhaps it would be a good idea to have a process in place that. When someone, you know, when, when someone wants to go, we have a process that, you know. The board meeting before or whatever timeline is appropriate, there's board action taking, taken to approve. Board member or board members to go to that conference. Um I might suggest. We have. You know, that the OSBA is a given, so we don't have to take. And then maybe even NSBA is a given to board members on a certain timeline, uh whatever that looks like. And then anything outside of that, we take action on and um and then the budget. Probably this happens through the budgetary process. That's kind of baked in. I don't think we need to get into like specific amounts or anything like that. Um in the policy, but I think having a policy, number one, is good. Having um. Having an outline of that we're being proactive and thoughtful um and um. And then that there's some sort of. Process for approval if the conference falls outside of the normal scope. Of conferences that, that we would normally attend. And like, for example, that. What I attended, I think it was probably a last minute thing. Brent's like, oh, we're doing this session. I'd really like somebody to come. But it would be, it would have been nice to. Offer that to anyone who wanted to. It didn't have to be me who went, so in representative board. So I would have been happy to have that up for. You know, if there was someone else who wanted to do it. So that just seems appropriate. Um and so.
We have a process like that with licensed professional development fund. So we have a template of registration, transportation cost, the. The fees that it will, will take. And so that we could utilize a template and just make it a school board template and say. You know, there's a conference coming up in February that I'd really like to attend. And here's the benefit, a little description of how it would benefit. You know, our board and our school community and, and I, I think that would be cleaner and um a good discussion and so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's fantastic that board members want to be engaged in professionally developer. Uh themselves and, and sit in on trainings and really be up to speed on, you know, it's gonna be vital coming down that. You know, and during the next uh few years and it always really has been better.
Michael, I just want to get clarification that you were talking about maybe looking at this summer. Conference time to look at what upcoming conferences might be available, not looking at this policy.
Correct. Yeah, like that will be part of our standard, you know, the board every.
A topic.
At some point in the year, we would look at what conferences, but I think, I think like OSBA conferences should just be way to get in. And, and then we should look at a lovely idea of NSBA sending a board member or two. Within a given timeframe, so people get the opportunity to do that. And it's from what I've heard, I haven't had the opportunity to go, but I've heard it's amazing. Development opportunities.
No, I just appreciate that clarification.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. No, the policy, I mean, I think we can, we can bring, I think there's a couple revisions we want to make, but we can bring the policy.
And do the revisions, do they have to be approved by OSBA before that's a perfect?
I don't think so.
No, it was just totally an optional policy. So we can, we can do, so like if you wanted to just take out that number one in the second section, we could delete that. Or you could put the superintendent may inform so that it's not will. Um we could just take it out.
Or staff or board members would just be really gentle.
Yeah, I can say board members will discuss upcoming conferences, conventions, workshops and training. Annually or something. The board will decide which appear to produce the greatest benefit.
And we even talked about the COSA, I think you presented this COSA.
No, I went to the COSA conference.
That goes, yeah.
So to beneficially, just thinking about the process more generally, sometimes I.
Do we want to bake into this policy the board plans to attend the OSBA sanctioned conferences annually? Um or, I mean. This gives us latitude, so um I just don't think we want to, you know, that's, I don't think that's one we want to make actually. Yeah, I don't know if it's necessary. I mean, we could make it a perfunctory thing where. Each, each year before OSBA, we approve it. Um we could do that.
But what, what if we just, Denise and. Either you and I just kind of give a, put some, based on this discussion, put some things in.
Yeah.
And just do a proposal and we can still mark it up on information discussion.
I like the idea of the form, the similar to the license form to. Yeah, um kind of round table discussion or potential also interest in attending um as we collaboratively look at different.
Be able to have an AR.
Would that be, well, I may call under an AR.
It might, I was gonna say, I talked to a member in Eugene and I haven't looked at their policy, but they do have a form they have to fill out and their board does vote on it.
Yeah.
And um. I'm sure if we could look at the Eugene's policies too.
Well, we can update something that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if I want to copy it, but I know they do have a form and then. It is, it has to be submitted and then approved. And they, they do information discussion and discuss it and then the next meeting they vote on it.
Okay.
And so.
Good idea.
And they have to, like Brent said, have a small, how this is going to benefit the board um and the district.
Great.
So, so I can have that on the December twelfth agenda if you'd like as one of the board policies for review.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
I noticed that NSBA has an in-person and also online um option.
I don't know how much they did online last year, Polly.
It's, I'm trying to look at next year. They're saying that, I don't know.
I sure not. I did, I don't. Nancy, you were at last year's convention. Do you remember an online option in the workshops and stuff?
I don't.
So maybe it's new. I, I missed the last meeting because I was the same time as another meeting, but maybe, maybe that would be a good option. I think in person at these conventions where you can have side conversations and talk.
Yeah.
Um are really good.
Questions are hard.
Yeah.
You know, you really don't get.
I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, is there something so um for our board? I should say for me, for my learning style. Student representatives. We requested that they attend the leadership conference. Um and I think that they did this last time if they were not attending. Um so is there something that we want to include in here? To provide opportunities for some of your student reps as well?
Thank you, that was.
Yeah, I would think we'd definitely be as simple as just adding student reps.
Is it here that it would be appropriate or would it be appropriate in the student representative um policy?
Good question.
I, we can check on that. I would think it would be more in the student representative because this is board member.
Yeah.
Development.
I would keep them separate.
So, but.
Okay.
I would suggest.
And, and that has, because that has its own nuances. They have to have a.
Chap or.
Chap room.
Yeah.
It's just different.
Yeah.
Well, and even the, but I'm speaking specifically, yes, about those other ones, but I'm speaking specifically too about the leadership conference that.
Hmm.
Um high school students attend. Yes, that they just want, yeah, yeah, the leadership students want and that we would suggest.
It's so sure. Right, didn't, didn't she already arrange for at least two of the reps to go to that?
Yeah, yeah.
They did, they did. Were already part of the leadership class, so they were already.
Okay, that's the one they zip one to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think it's, you know, think back to your policy best practices, right? You want it to be as. Raw as possible because the names of conferences change, conferences in general change. Are we gonna even have a summer board anymore?
I think we're more here and then we won't. And then there's also talk of, you know, having a regional meeting. Re, bigger regional meetings and other options.
Yeah.
Um instead, so there's.
There's no example of how stuff changes.
Yeah, there's, there's talks.
Yeah. Okay, so.
And it was, and NSBA changed their whole platform for this year.
Hmm.
The meeting, it got very confusing because. The meeting, it got very confusing because, well, there's usually a leadership institution in. September, right now, it's, I mean, the Washington DC trip has turned into six days for me because they've added, they moved stuff and moved it in front of there.
Wow.
And so, um I was just talking to Linnell and she's like, oh, keep on adding, like, hey, so it. Even NSBA is changing their platforms quite a bit and they're kind of evaluating it and it'll probably change again next year too. And the year after.
And the year after. I do like bringing it before the board though, I think that that's, I like that.
Oh, for like approving going to the conference, yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Then you can know for next year.
Yeah, no, this is really, really good, I thank you, Don, for bringing this up and.
Thank you for working it, cause I just felt like.
Yeah, no, it's really, really timely. So, um speaking of, OSBA, any, anybody like to share um some of the main takeaways? For them, I I wrote down like a top five before I left, but um.
Well then, why don't you start?
You want me to start?
Okay.
I usually try not to, but um.
In my case, the conversation going, since I'm not starting.
Yeah, so. Here's my top five, um. Uh number one, data dashboard, when we've already had some conversations about that, but just, you know, how we incorporate. Looking at data in those quarterly um check-ins. Um I don't know where we stand or getting us access to the dashboard and stuff like that, but um. I just think as part of the quarterly check-in process, I think a dashboard review should be part of. The board meeting in that corresponding quarter. Um where we're looking at our strategic plan data, but just. You know, there's gonna be stuff on the dashboard that maybe isn't specifically called out in the strategic plan, that's still important stuff that you wanna know. Um and and measure and so um I think it's all in all in conjunction with. Um with superintendent evaluation with just our ability as board members to. To know where students are at and um how we're doing um.
So that's. And there is an option to have board members have access to it. Um and a public view is not, there's no confidential information in there, but it's more. Uh kind of report card progress, it would definitely need to be in service and a training because. It's super cumbersome, um but I think what we would. What we would probably do is just set up reports to where, you know, this report and so you could just click on them and this report and just give you this information. Make two or three different reports that this aggregates data that um you could just access and. And keep updated on, so that is an option that we could do and I think uh would be fairly easy, but if we have to spend some time kinda.
Yeah.
Going through what that platform looks like and how to.
Is it possible to have some of that data as you're making decisions for the upcoming budget when you're looking at how? Um how programs are doing, how um how and then decisions that are made in the budgetary process. Utilizing that data or the data.
Yeah, we can do whatever you guys want.
I I mean, I think and I I appreciate that, I I think and I don't know how you all feel, but I would like us to just have. A dashboard. Of, I would like us to have a conversation about what we need to be reviewing quarterly. And and how that be a part of the board packet every quarter, here's where we're at. And and we can be, there's certain stuff that's not appropriate to look at quarterly, right, um but. Um there's stuff that we know we need to be accountable for. At all times and so um I think that just brings it more to the forefront and so. I, my hope is that we can design something that can be a one or two page, maybe front back. Here's our dashboard, here's, here's who our students are, how they're doing and we can figure out, you know, um. What what's on there, attendance, freshman on track, program participation, enrollment. You know, what whatever it is that we want to look at quarterly, a snapshot.
And 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 being transparent, we did did that with the strategic plan and we not restricted plans more by page, but we did a. From back snapshot, we gave them public, I mean, what every time we do that each quarter, we could just put it on our website as well. You know, we're doing it in a public meeting also.
Yeah, yeah, I I think it's important for for our students, for for our staff or the community at large to know that. We all acknowledge where our kids are in reading and math and other areas isn't where we want them to be. And we are taking a strategic evidence-based approach to address that. Um and we're holding ourselves accountable to it um to help inform our practices in the classroom.
I think what else that does is it allows us to use our local assessments too and really kind of show growth. And that's where we wanna get with more on the state accountability rather than just this aspect um. Snapshot, so it also allows us to kinda share how we're doing to our public.
Well, it also will be helpful coming into this long session too, when we have, if a bill comes up and it's time to do advocacy. Or forward, if there's a place where we already know. Data where we're not maybe having to specifically reach out to staff, hey, we'd like to on this or. Communicate this, we have a place to go where we can see our own data to show. How things will impact our district.
That's kinda why I would like to have access to the um database if it's possible for board members. Because sometimes the quarterly data is okay, is good, but sometimes it can be data that is recently or. Do you know what I'm saying, like?
Yeah, sometimes you just wanna know.
Well, if we're at a conference or at a, you know, some kind of, something happens, we have that information. Um there that we can speak out real quick if that's uh, cause I know we're a really active board and active in the community and. Sometimes we might need to be like, you know, how many students do we have that are unhoused or something, like we might need to know that. Like within ten minutes of this meeting or something, so I do, I I don't wanna make more work, but I think that it would. But would be my preference.
I think the intention is it's an investment of time at first to set it up upfront, but then it's in place. And then you're just making small tweaks to it along the way, but then it's in place, sorry, go ahead.
No, um no, that, and I agree, that's exactly what it is and maybe we can. Uh at part of our job, we can say, hey, at the end, this is how we're gonna monitor all the things. Because each of our schools are gonna report on basically strategic plan stuff, maybe at the very end we say, hey, this is a snapshot. A template, we don't do the training or anything, but this is what we're thinking for, to give uh access to our school board members. Uh to be able to look at it, and then we could do, there's a mark, march work session that we could actually do that. Um training on the dashboard, not just speaking out loud, thinking out loud.
No, and and I just wanna ground us in the why again is is I'm passionate. And I think you all are too about following the evidence-based best practices of school boards. That lead to student achievement and and a board that knows where their students are at by reviewing data. And having a data culture is one of those twelve elements, right? That that makes us an effective school board, so.
I appreciate what you're saying about best practices, is that something that we discuss? In like our work sessions or jab, what are those best practices as board?
I'm referring to the, so there's the guy, Thomas Atterbury, can't remember.
Don's got the board self-evaluation from here, is that those twelve points probably.
Yeah, it's, and so he, he has written a book on, here are the twelve things the most effective board needs. So that's when I talk about best practices, it's those.
And my concern is, yeah, how I'm gonna be revealing that, right, like the ability, not just, we're looking at. This dashboard of why is this important, but really it's supporting us.
Oh, yeah.
Do similar to what we're asking of schools.
And and that's where, so I, I mean, we could segue to it if you wanted, but but when we talk about the board self-evaluation.
Right.
What's on here now is the one we adopted a couple of years ago, which does not, it's not, so that's what we all agreed that we would. We would adopt uh OSBA's board self-evaluation that they're going to assist us with, which is. Measuring ourselves, that's, that's the moment when we step up and say, how are we doing on these twelve standards? Um and that's what brings it all together, to answer the question, that's, that's my hope, you know, um and so.
And then going back to the dashboard for the schools, would we, would we include Armadillo? I feel, maybe this is not like the time, but I feel like Armadillo is a part of our school district and yes, they are a charter school, but it's. It feels like the very distant stepchild and that feels weird in a district where we really want to. Foster belonging and inclusivity and that oftentimes feels different. Now, it could be that because our charter school and I guess I'm not, I'm not better in my brain.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that we can be more thoughtful and inclusive of that school because. Some of those, I mean, some, all their students that are part of our community. Only feels to me that I don't know enough, so it's not a critique, but I'm just trying to see clarification on what.
Yeah. It it does look a little different because it is a charter school, so I I feel like we've done. A good job including them in the jab and they come and present where their students are at, so I don't know, that's a, that's a good, yeah, no, I hear you. I, there are, there are, there are obligations we have as a sponsoring district to monitor where. I also think there are limitations to some of that too and and I think we have to be thoughtful about that, so I don't know, you wanna speak to that?
Well, they have their own governing board and so um we are the sponsoring district, we do have a contract that we say A and D are the obligations that. We want you to meet, um but but other than that and including them in the jabs and inviting them to board meetings and things of that nature. Um that's just how traditionally it's it's been, and I think that's been traditional in charter schools, I don't know. Uh I think we have a closer relationship with our charter schools than um, you know, some other districts have with their own charter schools, but. Um we partner on in services, we we uh include them on trainings, we still provide all the ELD, OSBA club services.
Yeah, does their attendance scores and test scores reflect on art?
Yeah, so that's when you see it, um that's why I really try to separate, set out, uh separate. Even though they've made some significant, they had forty percent graduation rate a few years ago and now they have seventy-two percent graduation rate, which is.
Great.
You know, we we put that threshold at eighty percent and, you know, moving up and um, you know, attendance is a challenge right now and that's the nature of. Uh you know, the students they serve as well, uh so we have some thresholds there, but um. Usually it was a significant difference, their their graduation rate on track rate at our high school does not, it it's, it does, yeah, and there's, there's. You know, twenty students, twenty-five students at grade level, so it doesn't really affect that. Attendance-wise, it does a little bit more, uh so you'll see our high school and our district and you'll see them. Even though actually our high, not this year, cause our school wasn't very good either, so um.
There are a good question, I think some of them might come down to logistics of what actually is fed into the system and what's not, we must have attendance.
We'll, we'll have to, yeah, we'll have to see if you can do that, that my envision uh of the snapshot is really a district strategic plan. Uh template rather than digging into each school, um but we can certainly do.
Well, and they have a new executive director, Summer was the executive director for four or five years and really. Made the intentional effort to come to board meetings and so. I think for a period, there's there, I certainly felt that there was more engagement with that community. Cause she really did make an effort to come and and I think the district did as well as far as supporting. And so we just haven't seen the new um executive director as much as we saw Summer over those years, so that's changed.
It has been in attendance some, but yeah, I I see what you're talking about.
Well.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I'd say historically, um back in the day, there were some challenges and so. We, she kinda came because we had some intervention. Protocolled in to help change, I think that she for, she appreciated the. Those protocol, they continued them on even though they weren't needed because she saw the value in them and so how do we get? Um the new person to see the value in in the things that Summer saw the value in, am I?
Yeah, 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 I was, yeah, um. Yeah, I'm Summer, kind of. When we were discussing renewal, she kinda seemed that whole process actually.
She did.
Um just real quickly, Brandon Heath, when. I'd say, just put that guy in charge of the whole system in the country and let him, let him cook, um but he, you know, just his emphasis on experience. Um what our kids experience and how often do we really put ourselves in their shoes and think about what they're experiencing in their day-to-day. Um classroom uh life and school life is such an obvious but powerful message, so um. Dr. Williams, I thought, I loved hearing from her and and the idea of write, write about what you read. Um you know, and and emphasizing that and um I know that's a big part of our curriculum, so that's why when we talk about things like. Making sure we're using the curriculum, um that's why it's important because it's, that's built into that and that's, that's something that we can. Coach to about, you know, make sure we're reading, we're writing about it too, and then she talked about.
Real quickly, I just wanna jump in there, cause we had that discussion and ad team and it's something that. Based on our family engagement, rather than really targeting a skill, really targeting writing in general. Because that helps reading, math, all sorts of stuff.
Right.
Families can engage in writing and across, maybe not be able to support a specific fluency squish uh skill or whatever. But just general writing, what that means about, right, all the vegetables that we have, you know, you know, just, just something really general. Um and Shawna actually brought it up to to really kinda do universal things that will help across the curriculum, writing is definitely that.
Love that, so sorry you weren't there, so I I wanna explain, so Dr. Williams, the education. Um deputy superintendent, she talked about things that would be, that are best practices that. Help our kids get more proficient in reading and math and and writing was.
No, I appreciate you.
Yeah, um and then the other thing is just different math experiences, so you know, not just doing it one way. Doing this one concept many different ways, this really helps from that, so it's, it's all like really obvious stuff, but. Um these are the types of things that, you know, your ad team can talk about and and our admin can look for and teachers can collaborate on. How do we make sure and how are we engaging our families in these things do, what what things can be done at home? Um this guy was great, Eric Schenjer, um he, he. He's an ed- I think he's, he's a former principal, but he's just all about innovation and um innovating the classroom experience and he. He specifically focused on a lot about AI, um and just has some really, really cool ideas, so um.
Wasn't the same one that was at the summer conference or was it?
I think so, um and then food service was my fifth, but I don't just have a chance to visit with food service people and. We talked a lot about that tonight already, so those were my key takeaways.
One thing that I took away, touching on the Brendan Flumby thing, um I'm pretty sure it was him that spoke, I don't have my notes with me, but. Um about individualism in the classroom and um how like educators and students are expected to leave. Their selves at the door and just, you know, go into this. Open, um and then I'm pretty sure it was the other keynote speaker who showed an image of. Like a fish in a fish bowl and a alligator and a giraffe and it was like climb the tree. It's like that was the task and I, I think that visualization was also really like. Transport home.
So true.
Yeah.
So true.
But Brendan Flumby, what you're talking about is the uh, how they talk about that forms of government and so he just had that activity to where they just started talking and. Yeah, five minutes to do this or fifteen minutes to do this and couldn't get done and then the discussion images are really cool.
Yeah.
Way to kinda engage.
I enjoyed him at the last conference that he keynote speak at, so when I saw that he was doing it again, I was really excited and hoping it was gonna be something. Different than what it was last time and it was, I guess.
Yeah.
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 Um the student panel, it was really disheartening.
Yeah.
It was really, really hard to have the students share and it was really hard to not be able to hear them. Um so it was just more of a logistical suggestion for OSBA.
Oh, they're on it, trust me.
What?
Did they already send a survey?
They did and um there was a few, yeah, it was discussed, yeah.
Yeah.
Internally by. Internally by people, and we still need to have more discussion, but yes, it.
A lot of things I thought was just setting expectations at the beginning, like everybody, please be quiet while you're eating your lunch.
Have it during eating time.
Or or just don't have it at that time.
Well, and that's what I said, like, like at least point to the meal is served because the waiters are asking, does anyone have any dietary issues and.
And asking questions, eating a pound and dropping, I mean, there it it just, it was just a logistical there that I think can be easily remedied, but that was.
It was there, it was very, it was our.
Number one concern of the of the O S B A board with.
Especially because we kept or some kept like. And we're here for students and then the students come up and no one listens, I'm like, oh, talk.
Yeah, it was.
A start, a reflection of where we are.
The thing I heard is part about that was not, was being courteous to the unconsiderate people, like trying to fight your tongue at that point.
Yeah.
Because it was very rude and most respectful to.
And he stopped, they said, okay, calm or quiet down.
No one.
And it well, it did for like a few seconds.
Or, yeah.
Few seconds, but then like that noise level and I was like, oh man, it was such a missed opportunity, but um. And I think the whole vibe of the um of the conference felt just very different for me and just I mean.
Can you, I'm asking this for eight best, like vibe.
Usually there's, it feels very energetic, it feels like exciting, it feels. And it didn't feel that way and multiple people had that, I was feeling a little bit odd about it and I kept internalizing it. And then somebody said, it just doesn't feel like before, so. But I mean, it happens transitions and it felt smaller.
It was small.
Well, it really wasn't as small, they had no, um sorry, I, so. We had a debrief the next day and Janet had went to um NSBA with us. And so they actually, the room was bigger than than it has ever been in the past. So it looked smaller and so we were talking about that the space of the ballroom was actually a bigger space. Than we've had before, but because of that, it looked different, so basically before we used to have like these two rooms and then if you looked, it was all these side rooms. So they took a whole bunch of the side rooms out because um when we were at NSBA, they have tables and. And instead of like the chairs and we thought people and the chairs are kind of, if if someone has like a disability. Or if they're, or if they've got, you know, some kind of challenge going through it, so we thought, so it looked. It was, it was an optical illusion, so how do we not make it look like that, but that was definitely, it wasn't as. It was space was bigger, so we were only down like fifty presentations, but the, but I think we doubled the space and so it.
Oh, and the other thing, the round table discussions, they were like so rich. But they were, yeah, but it was like the last day and there was.
It's like a stepchild, they keep moving it around at different times and then it's not really well attended.
I don't usually, because I just don't, I don't like that whole interaction, I don't like jumping from table to table and I I just don't. I, like Polly said, it feels like speed dating and it's like, I'm not a fan, just not a fan of the concept of it, I would, you know, I don't know.
You you you're all about the content, but it's.
Right, if they were like in separate rooms or something, I don't know, I I don't know what it is, but I just, I've never really enjoyed it.
Um I I I shared with Dawn, I personally, like I I really enjoyed what Vince did on the pre-session, but it was the exact same presentation as he gave in the summer. In fact, he said, I got through all my slides this time and I was like, I, he already paid for me to see that in summer. Why? And then I'm seeing this again, and that was a little bit frustrating for me, um although you still hear things, even though you hear it the second time, you still, and that data dashboard thing. You know, that 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 comes out of it, but I wish that and when we have to sign up and when they put the program out, I felt like I didn't know what was gonna be in the program. Or I would have thought like this is the same thing, I just already heard, so um that was, that was kinda frustrating, but.
I agree with that, yeah, I I do think it was a little bit more enriched because he did make it through all of his slides and his whole. You know, thing that he was planning on doing, there wasn't as many questions that were stomping it up, like there wasn't the summer conference, but it was like, oh. I just learned this, oh, I just learned this, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes, come, I mean, I I wasn't able to attend the summer conference, so I I'm glad I went to the pre-conference, but but it is, it would be good to know, you know, what's. Then you can decide, but in the future, there won't be a summer conference either.
Yeah, yeah.
There's nothing to worry, that problem is getting solved next year, exactly.
I enjoyed the summer conference more than the annual conference and I don't know if it's just like um like our mental occupation maybe.
Yeah.
But I do enjoy the summer.
And it might be the space at Salem.
I think it is the space, yeah, because Portland is so downtown and like, I don't know.
Unfortunately, we have a contract from two thousand twenty eight or two thousand twenty nine at the Portland State, and they keep on wanting it. I I've been in contact with Jamie because of my position on the board and she's, she is the finance person and. They keep on wanting you to to move the contract out like every, and so um she's kind of pausing a little bit, but you can save money. And if you do it, but it's kind of like a catch twenty two and and yeah, would would Portland be. They're thinking Portland would not be an ideal, and back in the day, I said I liked Portland because our region could fly.
Yeah.
But now even the flight options are not as good as they used to be.
There's two flights a day.
Yeah.
It used to be five.
Yeah.
Five, five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I used to have a good picket, now I don't fly because the the rain used to don't work for me.
I think it hasn't for the last eight years.
No.
No.
My schedule's just too weak.
I I had one that I could share with you, if I can tell you. The rural uh conference that. We broke out into groups and I went to the one for safety, my interests. But it was, it was very interesting, the person that headed it up was Pinehurst and. I I came away with how lucky we are.
Yeah.
Because they say if there's a disaster or anything, they're not gonna see anybody for four an hour.
Yeah.
Whereas we got SROs at in two towns and all kinds of protecting around here.
Where they can't afford to put locks on the doors, I heard someone talking about that.
Yeah, that was a. You know, the the budget, yeah, I can change a lot, uh there was a guy there from uh, I don't know what town, but Eastern Oregon. And uh. What was his, his deal, he, well, the same problem that Pinehurst had, uh. We may be rural, but it was kinda. Conventional.
There's a lot more, yeah.
The subject of guns, who was also his guns and uh. The leader said, ask this guy, how he told about guns, you know, they're in this rural area. He said, well, there's tons of guns in this area that aren't living there, but he said. Not at, not in the school, they don't wanna them in school because they don't know how to handle the guns, so. Although I was thinking myself, God, maybe it was a good idea if you were out there to, it's Pinehurst, you know.
Yeah.
Especially if there's an hour away is what the response time is.
Yeah, so. I I came away with, we were really lucky, uh.
I think I come away with that after every conference.
Yeah.
We have a really good board, we're really lucky to have a lot of the people that we have.
Good stuff, um okay, uh so for the board superintendent evaluation planning. I thought, maybe we must not have, I thought we adopted a new board self-evaluation, have we not done that yet?
I thought that was it.
Okay, cuz I thought, I thought we adopted the O S B A version.
We did that in the superintendent evaluation.
Okay.
I thought we did the kind of, did my.
For the board one too, yeah, maybe we could, maybe we can look into that.
January eighteenth, we had a bit, um with Kristen, is that her name, Miles?
I think we just, I don't think.
That's what we just discussed, we didn't just, yeah.
We didn't, we haven't adopted it anymore, okay, so we, so we need to do that, um.
Well, yeah.
And then, I mean. Listen, you guys voted for me again, I don't know what your vote is, um this is, this is classic, we talk about something and then we didn't adopt it, so. Um so we need to do that because, you know, I I my, I think we were, that was the intention.
That was the intention of the year, right?
The the new, I I.
Though, oh, no, that was superintendent.
Yeah, that was superintendent, but I could have sworn we did this, so anyway, that was the first thing that came to mind and then I was under the impression Kristen was going to help us. Help facilitate the superintendent piece too.
Kids, and I have that scheduled for March.
Okay.
Yeah, it says here on the.
But I just, these were topics you guys said you wanted to talk about.
Well, I see, I see, okay.
Did I not put that in?
Sorry, I didn't see the part about Kristen with the superintendent piece.
Oh, um it's up in the description, you know, the preamble.
I see that for board, under board self-evaluation.
Number one superintendent.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Should be done in board sort of.
But I don't see anything about, so I got confused there, I don't see anything about Kristen.
Um.
Being a part of that.
People who discussed having Chris, Kristen from O S B A to the Zoom meeting during the March twentieth work session.
That's for board self, not for superintendent, I thought she was helping us with superintendent evaluation too, I think that's what.
Is, um, did I not put the right dates in there?
Um, does it say?
So it's supposed to be our March second.
Six, for March third, March sixth, superintendent evaluation should be done during the executive session on March sixth. Evaluation workbook will be sent out on February and should be completed prior to the meeting and submitted to Michael by Monday, March third.
So I would like, uh so just a suggestion, I would like us to have, I would like us to have a session with her.
Right.
Prior to filling it out, so that, and and we can, whether that's with Brent or without. You know, but just, it'd probably be good to have you there, it is your evaluation. But just.
With or without you.
Uh just, just because it is, it is the first, it's this is the first time we've done this version, so um. So can you reach out to her Denise about getting some time?
She says she has a lot of time and we're the only board that schedules that far ahead, she's like, your board is very efficient.
Really?
Scheduled way more, all the other board members.
You don't have so bad then.
Well, yeah, I've already got that scheduled with her, I just may have the wrong dates, I want to see March something, but I already have something scheduled with Kristen.
Right, and I think, I think you did for the board self-evaluation, but we're talking about the superintendent, so will you look into that? And yeah, um so, so then I think we should.
Uh here's what I'm afraid that may have happened.
Okay.
Is when we switched the jab meeting, it might be in January actually. We used to have the January work session, and when we switched that, did we have Kristen assigned for January?
Regular or?
January sounds familiar, but I think we talked about it this year.
No, I think I only did, so my understa- I wanna say I only did for the March, my understanding is that. Brent's evaluation is pretty simple based on, you're just answering based on this workbook. That that was my understanding, when you adopted this, you're gonna go through page fifteen and give him a score. On each one of those standards and then each board member was to present that to you, Michael. And then you were gonna write a summary based on everybody's scoring, that's how I thought Brent's evaluation was gonna be. And I thought Kristen was supposed to help with the board self-evaluation because that was more in depth.
Well, she she's gonna help with both, because there's some changes in practices, for example, um no, I I think that's what we talked about. I know, because um like there's some changes in practices, like one of the things they recommend we don't do is the averaging. It should be consensus, right, and so um so, so that's why um.
And having her help us walk through how to do that accurately.
Yes, yes, yeah.
I remember that too, cuz she's.
Okay.
I love.
Not going completely long. Okay, alright.
That that she was gonna help us talk about how to.
Yes.
Yeah.
Against them.
And that was when it was, Brent was kind of an optional for that session. Because there were pros and cons to having the superintendent in the room while the board was learning how to do that and having. Having conversations about it, so I think that that's, that's why you said.
Yeah.
Pretend possibly not for that meeting.
Then we may have to find another meeting outside of what we've already got scheduled. Based on when we're supposed to have Brent's evaluation completed, which is supposed to be in March, because jab is in January, so that's probably what happened. Was unless we do the March work session.
I was thinking.
And then just prolong.
Kristen in February.
Pardon?
Now I was thinking meet with her in February, then we fill out our evaluation, then we, we can stay on the same timeline, but we.
And and we or you could meet even before board meeting, we could do a five o'clock start and go through with Kristen, it could be on Zoom. Think we talked about that, she doesn't have to come down here and then work, work on that and then still meet those timelines.
I think that we're going to need longer than an hour.
Yeah, or whatever time, yeah.
Just.
Or a separate day, I guess, yeah.
You know, throwing that out there.
I agree, and I'm the worst, and clearly, it's after eight o'clock, so. So yeah, I agree with you, Sarah, so okay, so we'll work on that, so let's. So if if the timeline works to meet with her in February, maybe the first part of February and then have. The second part to do the evaluation, um I think what might be different about this time too is a lot of times we do our evaluations. We may need uh an executive session where we meet to do the evaluation together. Cuz it's, it's consensus, a little different, um and then we have a meeting to present our evaluation to Brent, so it's a little.
Was how the.
Little different, um.
And that's why I was like, why are we handing them to you to calculate if we're supposed to come to this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, 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 so, okay. Okay.
So someone's gonna get dates on a calendar.
Yeah, Denise will work on.
My body.
So we're getting two executive sessions, right? Essentially for his evaluation.
Yeah, so the evaluation will be, will be time for us to meet and do it and then time for us to meet with.
Brent and deliver it and um yeah.
In that three meetings, cuz we need training about how to.
This, if this year it is three meetings, yeah, yeah, normally it would be two.
Why would we need, so I'm, I guess.
Or we could have her come to the meeting where we do the evaluation.
Take the, yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's.
That might be more, that will definitely be more efficient, so.
Because to fill it out, I mean, I'm just throwing this out here, to fill it out, I think we're all. Maybe capable of filling that out, I think, that is not. I think the problem, the problem is, would be, would be the, the, how to do it. I I think we can probably fill it out, we may have questions, but I think if we ended it on our own and and worked on it and then. And when we talked about com- the compromise, then we can do it, does that make sense, like?
It makes more sense for me.
Need to have an orientation before you like blindly try to do that.
Denise, I like to think always.
Go ahead, Denise, go ahead. So here is Kristen's email. So we'll talk the superintendent, we typically recommend staying on a cycle that accommodates the March fifteenth deadline. In the law for licensed folks unless there is something in his contract that specifies a different timeline, I will recommend that the valuation take place in February. If no other date is in the contract, then you can schedule the quarterly check-ins along that timeline, starting at the beginning of the year, given that this is a new. Starting at the beginning of the year, given that this is a new process. Everyone can give themselves some grace and know that it takes a year or so to get into a new rhythm, I would recommend that goals be established over this, so we've already done that part, but she didn't say.
But she was maybe planning to come and help facilitate that, but we're thinking that we would like her to.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's totally fine.
Yeah.
So but that could be happening because we could do that in an executive session and then our presentation to Brent could be.
Yeah.
I kind of envisioned her being there to not not mediate's not the right word, but just make sure we're on, facilitate, thank you. We're not there, let's be.
Michael, clarification, when you say being there, so he had said she really doesn't travel to do that?
Yeah. No, like overseas, yeah, it could be like a hybrid, yeah, yeah.
Overestimate.
Yeah.
She didn't be here. I thought we were on her calendar already.
What's happening?
It's a positive meeting, good for her.
Okay, so any other questions or thoughts on?
When do we ask the board adopt, sorry, the board self-evaluation update? Is that something that we need to do at our next meeting? Since we're playing, I think.
Can you ask Kristen that too?
I'm sorry, what I was doing.
When, when, understanding that we we previously discussed having her do the Zoom meeting during the March twenty work session. Um where the board self-evaluation, ask her. Do we need to adopt the new board self-evaluation before we do that, so I would imagine it would need to happen sometime early next year. At one of our January or February.
We already did that, so I'm.
I thought we did too.
Check, because we already had that.
Okay.
Well, I was hoping that that was what we were planning to do this year.
Yeah, it, yeah.
I thought we did.
You might have to search computer for its self-evaluation, post a board book, old file. Tails all this time, okay, um I know I do stuff like that all the time, so, okay.
So I guess I just want a clarification because I'm confused.
Yes.
So are we? I was confused, um are we having Kristen help us? She she's gonna give us an orientation before we fill out the packet, then we're going to fill out the packet and then she's gonna give us, she's gonna assist us on. Compromising, coming up with compromising and then she's gonna assist us with this, that.
No, I think, I think we could, we could do a couple things, we could have her meet with us and that could be fairly brief to walk through. Here's, here's how we do the evaluate, here's how you fill it out, we could have her do that, um and then we could have her there when we need to. Share our individual ones as a group, um before we present it to Brent, um but, or we could each fill it out. We could come to the meeting where we share our individual evaluations as a group and arrive at consensus, we could have her be there for that. And and if there's adjustments that you need to make to your individual one or, you know, you were confused about something, she can help with that. So I think, and it's more efficient, it's one less meeting, right, so.
Well, that's what I originally thought and then we were talking more and then I was confused.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so I think it's. The new process is always going to be two meetings. We're gonna eat, we're gonna fill out our evaluation, we're gonna come together and discuss it as a board first. That's where she'll, she'll join us this year to just make sure we're on track and then and then we'll meet again with Brent. Um or we'll meet with Brent at a, at the next executive session.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, that'll be the March six, yeah, so we'll need to do the first one. At the second one in February, probably. So the the timeline you have here Denise for the superintendent piece is correct, it's just.
Just everything else is wrong.
No, not everything else. No, it's just, it's just Kristen's involvement is the piece that we're missing in that, in that part of it, so then, so then, yeah, so then we need to figure out where we're at with. The board self-evaluation and then, and then that will come after and um. We, the reason it's in March is we talked about doing that in March.
I think there was probably one of them.
What was that? Okay, we could, is anybody clear his mind on that, alright, so we turn on that, no?
Because we might get more confused.
Yeah, sometimes you just gotta end it.